I'm glad you guys are here, and if you would, please, oh, roll call first. Mullins?
Here.
Hanlon? Noggle? Wagers?
Here.
Wagman?
Here.
All right, do we have any? No, okay. No one has signed up tonight, so we will move on to our Spirit Award. Mr. Mullins is going to do our first one.
Thank you. This is always one of my favorite things of the meeting that we do. Because I want to read something first, and then we'll get the nominees up here. It says, "We're looking for excellence." It says, "Nominees for the Sandite Spirit Award are those who have been recognized for achieving excellence through efforts in representing Sand Springs Public Schools and/or for the improvement and accomplishments in their drive for self-improvement." And two gentlemen tonight that we're going to recognize. When I heard that, when I read that thing, it says, "Drive for self-improvement." We're going to ask Gage Holman and Kayden Barnes to come and join me. And I understand that Kayden's not here, not he had another appointment. But Gage is here, and when I saw that "drive for self-improvement," I can't even spell chess. And you won a chess tournament. Oh, my goodness. What a deal. I'm going to ask Mr. Morrow to come and join me up here, too, because I think he was a little bit involved in this. And I want to tell a little bit about the story, and then all that. Derek, I've known Derek too long, so I can call him Derek. Is that okay? Okay, that's cool. But Mr. Morrow made a nomination. What he said was Paige Academy took on Jinx and Bartlett Academy from Sepulpa in a chess tournament. I said, "I can't even spell chess, and you guys are playing chess and winning and stuff." It's everyone had a great time, and the Sandites showed out a little bit. Paige Academy took first place in 10 and a half points. Jinx had nine and a half points, and Sepulpa had three and a half points. In individual awards, Gage Holman got first place. What a deal. What a deal. So Derek, would you want to share something about it?
Yeah, Gage was undefeated. Everybody he played, everybody he played, he beat with either checkmate, or they resigned. So he's, did one guy just quit, I think? So Gage is an excellent player, and he's getting better. He wants to play me next. I'm not sure how that's going. I'm not feeling good.
So Gage, what we got for you is the Sandite Spirit Award. Sandite Spirit Award and its certificate. This Sandite Spirit Award, this certificate is awarded to Kayden Barnes. And then we also have one, that's you, right? For outstanding achievements, accomplishments, and as Sand Springs Public School student or community partner, challenge minds, inspire hearts, empower a community of learners. You're doing that very well. We appreciate what you do. And also, I'm going to give you, if I didn't drop it, a, there's two of them here somewhere.
There it is.
Somebody's going to get two. And it's a Sonic Quest, either $10 or $100. I'm not sure. It says both on here, so I would probably try it before I spend $100 on it. But thank you for what you've done. That's yours. And Derek, I'll give you this other one to give to another buddy. Can we trust him with this?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. This is a copy of the nomination form, so.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice.
Good job.
Derek, we're going to ask you to stay up here one more time. So Wendy's got something for you.
Partly because of the chess tournament, Mrs. Schleyuber nominated you for the Pace Setter Award, mainly because you are beloved by students and staff alike. These are her words, and I'm going to read this because it's pretty perfect. "Mr. Morrow continues to find creative and innovative ways to reach all students at Paige Academy. Mr. Morrow is gifted in the art of making connections with all students. He takes the time to get to know students on a personal level and learns their skills, interests, hobbies, and passions. He is able to use that information to create meaningful experiences for students. The most recent endeavor he has spearheaded is a chess club for Paige Academy, the students. The week before fall break, Mr. Morrow organized a chess tournament with other local schools. When some of them were not able to come last minute, he was able to get together with local contacts and get two other schools to come in their place. Mr. Beard and I had the opportunity to observe the chess tournament, and it was so much fun. Students were engaged, inquisitive, and competitive. I am so thankful that Mr. Morrow is a teacher in our district and specifically at Paige Academy. He is the epitome of life-changing, of a life-changing teacher, one who cares about students in all aspects of their lives and works to find common ground with each and everyone. We appreciate you so much. Thank you." Ms. Schleyuber, do you have anything else? Because that was pretty perfect. Thank you so much.
And now we have the Coin of Excellence for Ms. Nancy Ogle. She'll come join me up here. And she was nominated by Ms. Turkey. And if you'd like to come up and join us. And I'm just going to read what Ms. Turkey said about you. Ms. Ogle is in her third year as our district's compliance coordinator. She is responsible for accreditation, state reporting, and has the helm of the virtual academy. She deserves recognition for her concise and efficient work with our regional accreditation officer and her prowess with our district's data. That's huge, district data. Her expertise is unmatched, and she has the ability to clearly articulate solutions when working with the State Department of Ed for data corrections, many times with statewide issues. More often than not, Ms. Ogle is able to be a resource for troubleshooting systems, communication between our student data platform and that of the State Department. She makes processes seem effortless, and her calm demeanor through all the critical reporting periods is phenomenal." And our Medal of Excellence says, "Think right, challenge minds, inspire hearts." And we so appreciate.
Thank you.
You do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I knew it. I try not to keep the microphone for very long, but let me just say, anyone that's worked with student data to the tune of 5,000 students with lots and lots and lots of different components of demographics that aid us in basically our state aid, which helps us fund schools, it's super critical that we get those elements correct. And so I can't think of a better person, to be honest, to handle that large load on her shoulders with finesse and calm affect, which I think the rest of us could struggle with if you're looking at pages and pages and pages and pages of numbers. So thank you so much for what you do.
All right, that was the fun part of our meeting. We're going to move into the business agenda, and please feel free to stay. We'd love for you to stay and hear the items on the agenda. But if you have other things you would rather be doing, please feel free to leave. All right, we'll start with student empowerment and staff empowerment.
So for this particular element, there's actually two forks that we want to talk about tonight, for lack of a better way to put that. And of course, we want to hinge on student data to make sure we're doing what we need to be doing. Mr. Beard is going to show you a PowerPoint tonight that does like a three-year comparison of district data, even though from testing, by the way, in the spring, even though we know the avenue to get to that data was kind of hard to put a lot of stock in, the ability to interpret what that says, although there were some high points. I'm going to let him do that here in just a minute. But the other part of that is the student successes that we can't forget. And Sand Springs was in the news a couple of times this last week, sharing just some positive stories out of our community. One was a story about our Indian Ed Director Lauren Rowley starting a drum group for our native students, which made it in the news. But also, they performed at the football game, not really. They had a little section set up before the game started, and they had media coverage, which was really cool to highlight that group. And then a huge celebration is really a grown-up student who is serving as a volunteer custodian one of our sites, Limestone Technology Academy. And this is a kiddo that grew up through our district. He's a student with special needs, but has become this brilliant addition to the limestone staff, and he is beloved. So it was just a really fun story of Paul Ferguson, and we all celebrated and said hooray for him. So we can't forget, I think, about, yes, student achievement is very, very important, but there's a fun and a very personal side to how we incorporate activities into student interest and what they do, and how we raise them up to be very productive adults. And so we can't forget both sides of that coin. So Sean, if you don't mind, there's a couple of highlights we'd like to talk about in terms of what we see as trending data for our district in a positive way, and then I kind of will dig into some of the other questions you might have about graduation rate and such.
So after we were talking through the school report card, Ms. Turkey and I were talking through what does that data look like historically, how will we improve over the past three years? And so from that conversation, I went through our accountability report cards for the past three years, and just wanted to touch on some of the highlights. So what you're going to be looking at is a site-by-site comparison of the last three years of the data that's related to basically our accountability as far as academic achievement, academic growth, ALPA progress, chronic absenteeism, and then just our overall score. Each school is going to have one of these slides. But in addition to that, I wanted to go over just some of the high points, some of the positives that we see out of that three-year run. So here, you're looking at Angus, and one of the positives that we saw out of that three-year progress was that our math. At Angus, the math, there was an increase in academic growth in math from '23 to '24. So anytime we can see a gain in student growth from one year to the next, as far as their academic achievement in any subject, that's always a high point. So that's Angus. And then with Garfield, you're going to see that we've had some gains in academic achievement and academic growth, and then also our ALPA progress. Lot of high points with Angus, or Garfield here, excuse me. So specifically in 2024, academic achievement in ELA math and science all went up. The yellow is the 2024, red is 2023, and blue is 2022. Yes, sir?
What grade, what grade is it? Is it all the grades of the school?
That's an overall, that's overall growth, overall achievement. Yeah, so what we're looking at is overall for the school. Yep. So, and then specifically, as far as academic growth in math, I've got a lot of feedback on this microphone, it sounds like Cindy. Specifically in math, in 2024, we saw growth beyond '22 and '23 altogether. So even though we went, we saw a dip in math growth last year, this year, our students were able to see a growth beyond even 2022 at Garfield. And we move on to limestone. And with limestone, we saw some overall growth as a school, but specifically academic growth and chronic absenteeism. We were able to overcome last year's report on both of those. But specifically, the high point there is math and ELA saw growth beyond '22 and '23 as well. Northwoods? Now it's almost too low. Can you guys still hear me? Okay. As far as growth at Northwoods, one of the things that we're seeing for this period is in 2024, we saw academic achievement in science, so we saw a slight gain there in science. And of course, we saw an increase in academic growth in ELA from '23 to '24. And then moving over to Pratt. And by the way, whenever you see some of these charts that have no data for one year or another, specifically with ALPA progress, that means that they probably or likely did not have ELs in the building at that time. So, but specifically, the high points with Pratt, there was an increase in academic growth in ELA from '23 to '24. Probably one of the biggest highlights that you're going to see tonight is at Clyde Boyd, and I think this is from the hard work that they put into working on their math progress last year. But you're going to see some gains all across the board, academic achievement, academic growth. Specifically, though, in math, there was a significant increase in the academic growth in 2024 above '22 and '23. And that's to do with a lot of the work that was put behind the double-block math periods that they put into effect last year. And we're hoping to see more gains this year, as they've done so with math again across the board and with the ELA. So, and then also, on the left side, the achievement, and there's an increase in 2024 academic achievement in ELA math and science. And then finally, Charles Page High School. Sorry, went a little bit fast there. There's the data. We saw an increase in ALPA progress, but one of the things that gets reported for Charles Page that you don't see for the other sites is graduation data. If you look at the graduation data, there was an increase in the four-year graduation cohort. You don't see an increase in the five-year or six-year, which is actually someplace that you wouldn't normally want to see that. You would want to see more students graduating on time in the four-year cohort as opposed to a five- or six-year cohort. But in addition to that, we also saw an increase in 2024 academic achievement in science. So, you know, all the time, we are, we were bringing forth data. Sometimes we have some low points to talk about. And one of the things that we really wanted to do here tonight was just to highlight some of the positive things that we're seeing out of each building. It was nice to see that there were some positives for everyone across the board, so.
One of the things you might have noticed is the chronic absenteeism rate was decreased, meaning that's not a good thing, or increased. You wanted to see lines that were higher, but in chronic absenteeism, when that gets higher, that's not a good, am I saying that right, Sean? I think I am.
You are. Clyde Boyd in the high school did not see that as much, but let me go back to one to give an example. I'm getting dizzy here. It's a, we're also comparing through a year or two, though, that's the other thing. So we saw an increase in chronic absenteeism at a couple of the elementary sites, definitely. Like you can see here, there's an increase in chronic absenteeism at limestone. And at Garfield.
I express that because it's one of the pieces of the report card that we really can't control, and that's parents getting their kids to school. The other thing I would say about the data that is good to understand, these aren't individual scores, which is harder to create some semblance of improvement because they change the cut scores. But when you see cut scores change for overall data for the district, a bell curve is a bell curve. So even though the cut scores change, they're still going to statistically apply a formula to create a bell curve for each year. But I think the standout for me on this data is Clyde Boyd Middle School, to be honest. And I, we've hyper-focused on that, and when Noel created the double-block classes for last year, it was a select group of students, and we wanted to see if there was gains. And we saw that specifically with math, because I don't know if you remember, but our math scores at Boyd were tanking pretty good the past few years. And so interestingly, she, before we even saw that data, she was convinced that was working, and so she double-blocked everyone for ELA and math. And I suspect we'll see some incremental gains. And I think that more telling piece of that puzzle is what you see individually when we do the benchmarking, which we'll report in May, May or June, when those are completed at the end of the year. So this is based on state testing results. Again, you know, it's really hard considering the comparison data they use from student to student, but just groups of cohort. I just wanted to see a better performance specifically at Boyd in math, and that's what we're seeing. So I'm really proud of Clyde Boyd this year. So wanted to see that, yep. Yeah, so instead of one period of math, they have two, every single student. And then their science and social studies is still one period, and then they have two electives. So what she's done is an eight-period day.
So to give you an example, last year, what they did was they took students that they targeted that were sort of on the fringe, students that were having difficulty, and they put them in a double-block. And to give you an example, IKEA.
Baker, well, it's not Baker now, help me.
She's just Ms. IKEA. But yes, Ms. Landrum, she would have a double-block of math, and in one section of that, she would work with them on their math skills for remediation and filling in gaps. And then the second period of that day was on-level math. So, and saw some definite gains out of that for those kids. So, any other questions?
Perfect. If you have no more questions for Sean, I'm ready to move on to item number eight. So we are in a place where we know Esser funds are expiring this semester. I have to give a shout out to Claudia Smith, because while she's working on finalizing grants, Title I, Title III, Title II for this year, she also is working on performance reports for expenditures of the Esser money, which has been a little chore, to say the least. And then as well as that, she's also working on our standard monitoring that happens every five years. And so she's got the trifecta going on right now with, and pulling her hair out with those tests, so she needs a big pat on the back. She's doing amazing. The big celebration tonight is the 5% stipend that we're able to recommend for all employees this year for December. So you'll see that recommendation under item number 33. We ended the year with a fairly decent carryover, and so we wanted to make sure that we were spending that down a little bit and also rewarding our folks. And so hopefully, you'll see it in your hearts to approve that stipend. And then just another shout out for Ms. Ogle. First quarter statistical, it happens in October. We typically have all of our data certified at this point in the year, and there have been so many glitches, not just in our local system, but also at the State Department of Ed with the new SIS system. There has been some trickiness about finding support at the State Department of Education because they are really busy, as you can probably imagine. And so it has been a struggle, not just for Sand Springs, but across the board. But you talk about a trooper, she has just continued to fight that battle. So we are almost there. She's right now working on economically disadvantaged to make sure we get all those weights, and we'll have that data hopefully certified by the end of the week. So that's our goal. Revenue seems to be stable statewide in terms of finance. Cassidy can talk through a little bit of what he's seeing, and I know he's got his reports that are there on your agenda as well. But right now, we've managed well. I know there are a couple of districts in the state that are struggling with some budget deficits. We knew two, three years ago that there was going to be a cliff with federal funding, and that was going to go away. And so I think the last of our money, Claudia, help me, $15,000 we had left to spend for this current year?
Actually, I'm done.
We're done. We are done. Right. So it's been pretty good, but we knew a couple of years ago, we had to compensate for the employees that we hired with the new money and make, we had to make sure that we were able to retain, and we retained all of them with some just real keen eye on budgets and revenue. So I'm proud of that. So any questions about resource, finance?
I just appreciate the vision of the administrative team to monitor and distribute those funds, because we knew that they were finite.
Absolutely, yeah.
Certainly appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you. And the next.
I was going to say, too, I appreciate the job that you're doing in that, because we, in this very room, last week ago tomorrow night, we had surrounding districts visiting with us in here, and they were amazed and impressed, and I was so proud that we're fully staffed. That's unheard of in our business in the Tulsa market today. And we did that because of good planning, because of the districts, the good things that we're doing in the district. So kudos, nice job. We appreciate it.
I still say it's about culture above everything, to be honest, and giving teachers back their professional, their professionalism, and allowing them to have some autonomy in the classroom while holding them accountable for teaching standards. So we get some pretty good feedback, I think, from the people that we hire. Ashley's over there nodding her head. Eric, you know, sitting out here in the audience for transportation. We have a full staff of drivers, which is unheard of, to be honest. And so I wish it was because we were paying them a lot of money to be on, but we're not. We're pretty standard. So it's just all about making the culture in a place where they want to come to work. So thank you for that. Moving on to number nine, if you're ready. That's communication and community involvement. I, we had our second coffee with cabinet at Garfield. We had one parent show up, so that was less than the ten we had at the first one. So we'll see if it gets better. We're going to be at Angus November the 18th, and I don't know, we'll just see who shows up. I will say, the one parent that did come was very complimentary of Garfield and Mr. Ragland and his job as the administrative lead at that building. So that always makes me feel good to know that our leaders are taking care of business. But her biggest question was about curriculum, specifically supplementary materials that our teachers use. We were able to share with her, it is adoption year for social studies, and she seemed very inclined to want to know more about that. And so we gave her a lot of information, specifically about the fact that they're rewriting social studies standards right now. She seemed to be a history buff and was a little concerned about a supplementary piece that one of the teachers had used, because she didn't feel like it was factually correct. And so she was very interested in making sure that the history we teach going forward is, in fact, history that we know is correct. So I was really impressed with her knowledge, and there was a lot of legitimacy in what she was bringing to the table. So we were able to have a real conversation about that and give her a lot of information. So anyway, next meeting is November the 18th. Love, love, love to have you, all of you, one of you, some of you to come. It's kind of fun to listen to parents that come. It's at 7:45 in the morning, yeah. Trying to catch people as they drop kids off at school, 5:30 and before board meeting doesn't seem the time, that people want to come talk to us. There's two ways to look at that, by the way. They, I feel like, for the most part, the public trusts what we do with kids, so they don't feel the need maybe to come and kind of find out more. But at the same time, we want them to partner with us, so we're really looking for ways to get people engaged in here to share. So I think we're on a, we've got a good idea going there. The next, unless you have questions, is health and safety. There are two agendas on this item. One is the District Safety Committee, and the other one is the Healthy Schools Committee, which meet the same day. You know, they, we go through safety parameters of our sites every single year. This year, OSSI, the Oklahoma School Security Institute, did inspections of every school site. We just received those today, and to be honest, I haven't had a time to look at them. We were told that it was going to take a couple of months, and I think they just finished a couple of weeks ago, and we have them already. So there's going to be some things in red that they would suggest. Interestingly, one of the things Mr. Smith brought up when they were finished is the idea of designating parking places for our leadership team. They didn't like that because people kind of hone in to where people park, they know what kind of car you drive. It was an interesting comment on some of the forums, so I've, anyway, something to discuss later, I can promise you, with our leadership team, but it was an interesting comment. We're adding additional AEDs in certain areas. Ms. Schleyuber is in command of the nurses and handles a lot of the health-related things. They did a little bit of a survey to... things. They did a little bit of a survey to decide if we could get to those machines timely. We know there's a couple athletic facilities, one in our office building, and we talked about and decided against a mobile AED. Not to say that we wouldn't do it, but having enough to cover all the buses seemed really far-reaching to have enough money to do those things. But we're we're on the the hunt to purchase some new ones. And then, of course, the Child Nutrition Department had the second-grade farm to school day, which is a big hit for kids. They get to go to the FFA barn, and they get to see all the animals. They had participants from OSU Extension, Highland Dairy, Master Gardeners, the FFA kids, learning all about how to make butter and all the things that you do to produce good food, healthy food to eat in the cafeteria. So that happened, and I think that's always a hit with kids. So any questions about healthy and safe-related issues?
All right, consent agenda.
Absolutely. There's only a couple of things I want to bring to your attention tonight. Item number 20, letter A. Bring this. We have this item on the agenda all the every single month, and it's upcoming in meetings and events. And then it's in this item that we get to tell, you know, all the professional development that we go to that may not be local. In this case, I want to highlight letter A. I'm pretty excited about it. AAS is the organization I belong to nationally, and I sit on the governing board of that organization. But this year, they are hosting Summit 1.0 in Tampa, and we're sending Sean to go learn all about AI. And we have a speaker coming next year in August to talk to our entire staff about artificial intelligence and how to safely and smartly use that technology. But we want him to be kind of the front runner of all things Oklahoma. So we're sending him away to Florida in January. Item number 23 is the first read of the revised graduation requirements. I bring that to your attention because we literally just took OSSBA policy and are asking you to consider that next month. It matches to the T exactly state law, which, beginning in with the graduates of 2030, that fourth math requirement is going to be a thing. It might be kind of fun to talk about graduation right right here, to be honest, because that's different than what it used to be. Our kids that are college-bound, especially those that are accessing D1 scholarships, are still going to need a foreign language. So there's some parameters that don't quite match up. But, you know, we're all about rigor. And so we received notification from the State Department of Ed a couple of weeks ago notifying us that they're changing the way they calculate graduation. So as you are very well aware, there is a core curriculum pathway that students can choose. And what we're hearing from the State Department of Ed is they're going to not allow kids who graduate in that pathway to count toward the total percentage. They'll still get a diploma. They'll still graduate, but they'll be counted in the denominator of that equation, but not in the numerator, which means statewide, if that holds, graduation rates will go down in the state of Oklahoma and Sand Springs, because we're talking about enough of a subset of students that take chose to take the core curriculum pathway that probably are interested in going straight to work when they get out of high school. We have lots of kids that do that or are going to tech school. So we'll see how that that there's a lot of statewide talk about leaving that alone. Apparently, the word on the street is that we could have applied for a waiver as a state in order for those kids, those graduates, to count in the rate. But we didn't apply for that, which I think can happen even now. So more to come on that. But I do want to make people keenly aware that when you see if you see if it sticks, and the graduation rate goes down according to the report card, in effect, it's not quite accurate in what I would consider what an efficient graduate is of of Sand Springs Public Schools or the state of Oklahoma. So anyway, more to come on that. If that were to happen, I'd probably calculate another graduation rate for Sand Springs and include those students to give you apples-to-apples data on last year versus this year comparison, because our graduation rate has always been fairly high. So just wanted to give you that little nugget so you could hear that publicly.
If I'm understanding you right, if just to make numbers easy, 50% of our kids took the core curriculum, and they did everything, and they'd get a diploma, and 50% of them took the college-ready thing, and they did everything right and got a diploma, we don't have a 50% graduation.
We would have a 50% graduation rate. That's correct.
Even though 100% of our kids got a diploma.
Correct. Yeah. In the simple math, yes. It's more like 90% are taking the college and career pathway versus 10%, maybe. That's probably even a little bit high, 10%. We probably don't have that many taking it. But when we got the memo, the first thing, my first phone call was to Ryan Bivin to say how many kids are taking the core curriculum. I personally think there's a lot of students that choose a pathway that lends itself to tech in professions that we need. What we're able to do now is incorporate, say, a math credit that's driven by their curriculum in Tulsa Tech, and they get a math credit for that curriculum. The challenge is to show and illustrate that those math credits are equal in rigor that maybe a class that they would take at Charles Page High School. So there's some conversations that need to happen in terms of specifically, I say math because they added the fourth credit, that we need to have internally to talk about applications, like what is it with our math skills? Do we need to? Can we teach our children that has to be above Algebra I rigor that are still very important and applicable? When I think about that, I think about economics. How what kinds of things do I have to know to be able to buy a house, or managing interest rates and credit cards and, you know, kind of that personal finance? So we're talking about those things and how to get those credits. And Sean, I don't know if you want to add to that conversation, but it's.
I was just thinking through some of the Career Tech courses, too, that would have. Sorry. What's this thing on? Thinking through the Career Tech courses that could also count as a math course, because there's some higher-level math skills that go above Algebra I even that you would use in welding and that you would use in in other places. So interior design, you know, may have some math, but engineering, computer science, so other other pathways towards math.
So more to come on that. If you remember a few years ago, when JD Noel and our state rep was so proud of the ICAP law, creating career pathways for every kid and being very intentional about having conversations. And so that's what we've done purposefully. I'm not planning on changing that that way, the way we do that with students, because I think it's effective, and I think you're doing the right thing with kids. And so, again, more to come. There was quite a little stir statewide when all of that kind of came down the pike. So we'll see where that lands. I know Career Tech and Higher Ed are not petitioning, but they're writing the USDE to say, hey, some of those courses that we teach are as rigorous, and they should count toward that graduation component. So more to come on that one. But I really felt the need to say that, because I didn't want that to surprise anyone. Other than those two items, unless you have questions on any of the other consent agenda items, we can vote to.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
All right. We'll move on to the action items. First one is a proposed executive session to discuss temporary teacher employment recommendations. Do I have a motion? Okay. I'll move on to item number 27, a proposed executive session for to discuss employment recommendations is listed. Okay, we'll move on to item 28, a proposed approval of the temporary teacher employment.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the temporary teacher employment recommendations for the 2425 school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
And then item number 29, proposed approval of the employment recommendations is listed.
I'll move to approve the employment recommendations for the 202425 school year.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Okay. Item number 30.
So this is the board meeting dates for the 25 calendar year. They are attached. I would just make note of the January meeting that is coming up really soon is scheduled for the 13th in this one. This is something I had to share with LD Kearns, to be honest, this week, because we were trying to target when we would approve the Boyd construction bids. And so just know that that's bumped up because of Christmas break extending to Friday, January 3rd. So.
I'll make a motion. We approve the regular board meeting dates for the 2025 calendar year as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Item number 31, the Open Records Act.
So we're asking for approval tonight. We actually approved a item last month about open records, and the biggest, the only change in this one. And didn't realize that was also in the regulation. So Beth caught it. We need to make that change as well.
I mean, Beth gets a raise.
Beth might get a raise.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised policy to add to the district policy manual as stated in item A.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Item number 32, discussion of possible board action to pass the 2025 annual school election resolution.
So this is a an item, action item, that we do every year. As you know, one person is up for reelection, one seat. This year, it's seat number five, office number five. That would be Ms. Wagner.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, I guess we have to approve the annual election resolution for board seat number five, which is our largest geographical, looking at the map behind you, seat that's open.
In the blue. That's correct.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Okay. How about item number 33?
So that was the one-time non-recurring stipend for 2425 to all eligible. It is the same criteria as last year, meaning it's that early notification of intent to return for the 2526 school year. The difference is we're recommending 5% for all employees rather than incrementally making it more for folks that have returned from last year. So we just we have the ability to do that. So we thought it would be a great idea to recommend five for everyone. Mr. Wyans' point was, we appreciate them all, right, which is true. And then we want them all to come back, which is also true. So that would be the proposal this year.
Mrs. President, I'm happy to move to make a motion to approve the one-time non-recurring stipend payment for the 202425 school year to all eligible personnel who meet the listed criteria in number 33.
I'm excited to second that motion. Can I ask one question about it?
Yes.
What's the dollar amount?
So we're doing it. I'm estimating about 1 point between 2 and 4 million.
Okay.
We're taking they haven't done the math yet, but we know we can afford it. And so Mr. Wyans is thinking more like 1.4. I'm saying 1.2 plus. So we'll see who's right. We'll let you know next month.
1.3, actually.
1.3. That is not fair. He's doing the math right now. That's great.
Okay. And I'm happy and excited to have a motion and a second for this proposed for this proposal. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Okay, item number 34.
And so that's the authorization of the lease purchase agreement. If you'll remember, we made an agreement with Huntington National Bank to finance the scoreboard, the Daktronics Jumbotron at Memorial Stadium. We did that with an interest-free lease finance agreement with them, which means we're paying an equal amount over five years to pay for that without interest. So this would be the third, Cassidy.
So yeah, after this one, we'll have one more payment.
So the fourth.
So this would be the fourth one.
I was doing the great debate in my head yesterday. Time escapes me. So it's number four. We have one more. So what a great way to be able to purchase something without over time without paying interest on it.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion on item number 34 that we approve the resolution authorizing the use of a lease purchase for the scoreboard at Memorial Stadium.
And I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
All right. Any matter not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the posting for this meeting?
No, ma'am.
Any announcements?
Yes. Voting day is tomorrow. So I would encourage all Sandites that that are able to get up and go to the polls to go exercise their right to vote. That was hard fought for us by many, many people. So go vote, Sandites.
I'll second that.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Vote, please. Mullins.
Aye.
Wagers.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.